Okay, we'll get ready with our city council meeting. We want to welcome everyone here. Today is October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty five. My name's Rob Vanderwood. I'm the mayor of West Haven and will be conducting this meeting today. Overall, we're grateful to have our staff here. We've got a few folks from our council that will be on Zoom today because they're out of town. And they can accommodate that through the Zoom meeting. So we're glad to have them with us as well. We all will get started here with our off the bat and we have council member call out. Does someone want to fill in for doing that? I can do up with that. Okay, we'll have our we'll have our pledge of allegiance by council council member Morris and our prayer or moment of silence by council member Saunders.
Please rise and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered here tonight as council and citizens and law enforcement. We're grateful for all that we have. We're grateful for this wonderful city and nation that we live in. We are especially grateful for the moisture that we've received recently and and thankful for the opportunity to be here and help guide the city as best we can. We ask for thy help and guiding hand in that. And pray for thy protection to be with those who serve us in law enforcement in the in the city. And we pray for those who have had recent tragedies and ask that thou would bless them and and build them up. And we pray for our communities and and their strength and their wisdom. And we pray for thy help in those things and ask these things. In the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris and Councilmember Saunders. Appreciate your help on that. On next item, on item three will be our public presentation. This is where residents attending this meeting will have allotted two minutes to express a concern or ask a question about any issue that is not on the agenda. No action counter will be taken on any items that are brought to our attention or presented. So do we have anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to our next item, item four, our upcoming events. We have our music circle that will be at the Community Center Barn. That will be on October twenty seventh. We have our senior lunch bunch that will be at the Community Barn as well at on October twenty second. That will start at eleven thirty AM AM. And we have our dumpster days, which everybody looks forward to, our fall version of that. This is for residents for the purpose of cleanup. We want to make clear that this is this is an opportunity for people to come out and clean up their yard or clean up just some junk in the city. It's not for contractors or cement dumping, anything like that for the area. But you can bring green waste and things like that in the specific areas that we have outlined. Make sure if you do come that you do have some form of ID showing that you're from the city is helpful. There'll be people there hopefully to check that. We also have our pumpkin walk that'll be moving forward on October twenty seventh. That'll start at six thirty PM. That'll be the youth council will be so involved with that. And that'll be our Kenneth Kenneth Baldwin Park, Country Park there. We have our another important item on here is Weber Fire Open House, Weber Fire District's open house. That will be on October thirtieth from six o'clock until eight o'clock. And what is that for? That is for the potential new building that will be going into West Haven just off of thirty sixth and Midland Drive area. And they'll be talking about how this will affect the city and so forth. So it's really important if you get a chance to attend that. That will be at the at this building here at the West Haven Building for for that information. There's also others that they're providing if you can't attend. They're on the on their website. We also have some discussions on that will from UDOT that they'll be doing an open house. That will be for the West Weaver Corridor, which people have been anticipating for a long time. And it is coming coming to town, but it'll take a while to get the all the information that they're doing on environmental studies. You have a chance to see approximately where they will be doing some of the road projects and studying those areas for moving forward with it. So that will be on November twentieth, just to put on your calendar and it will start at five five o'clock. I think that's it for upcoming events. Anything else council can think of? Okay, we'll move on to item five on here, our council updates. The council, do you have anything you'd like to share with the public? Okay, we want to thank everyone for especially the League of Women Voters for putting on the Meet the Candidates last night. I think it was very successful and worked out well for the public to learn about their candidates and hope that they do look into that and make the best choice that they can. We also had a wonderful, I would say, a project that was done by the youth council over at the Canesville Elementary, painting maps on the on the ground for the kids. Those had all faded out. They looked horrible. And the youth council went over and did a fantastic job putting that and painting all those back on the ground. So the kids understand some of the states and things like that. They're they're got some pictures. We'll be posting on that as well. And really turned out nice and appreciate our youth council and our leadership and our youth council doing such a great job. A big kudos out to Sarah Nguyen and our council member liaison, Kim Dixon. So we appreciate all that was done by the youth council there to make our city a little nicer. Also, we have on our agenda, item six, Action on Consent Agenda. Item A is for City Council Minutes. They were held on September seventeenth of this year. We have our item B, Staker Parsons Companies for one hundred and twenty nine thousand, three hundred and seventy five dollars and seventy five cents. Item C is for Staker Staker Parsons Companies for one hundred and ninety seven thousand, six hundred and ninety six dollars and seventy six cents. We have item D is our Weaver County Sheriff for five hundred and ninety one dollars, nine hundred and ninety six dollars overall. We have our item E is for our Taylor West Weaver Water Improvement District for ninety one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And finally, on item F, we have our Anderson Asphalt for a hundred and one thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and seventy five cents. So any questions on the consent agenda? If none, I'm ready for a motion.
We'd move to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions on this consent agenda? Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. Let's do Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Schwab.
Aye.
Councilmember Saunders.
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon.
Aye.
And I have Councilmember Cole. It looks like she's dropped off.
Aye.
There she is. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you on the consent agenda. We move on to item seven, Advice and Consent of One Events Committee Member Appointment Submitted by Mayor Vanderwood and myself to fulfill a two-year term. The term will be from October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty five through December thirty first of two thousand and twenty six, as it ends towards the end of that year, as we do them year to year. So the name I'd like to submit for that is Jennifer Stryker. She is the person that works diligently over at Saint Mary's to do their Fall Festival. She did an excellent job over there and she is also on our planning commission. So she wanted to join our our events committee and hope that the council will approve that. So any questions on that?
Jennifer's awesome, so no, no complaints here.
So I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve item seven, Advice and Consent of One Events Committee Member, Jennifer Stryker, for appointment submitted by the mayor mayor Vander sorry Vanderwood to fill one two-year term. Term will be from October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hey, excellent. Thank you for that. We'll let her know that she's been approved and can jump right in, get started. We'll move to item eight, Action on Planning Commission Meeting Recommendations. We can move up if we want to do that.
I would I would move, make a motion to move item eleven back up above eight.
Okay.
And then go to eight.
Let's do that. Let's move that if the council's okay with that. Okay, yeah. All right, we'll go ahead and do that. And so we will have a discussion with Waste Management Contract Extension and Implementing a Recycling Contract. We'll have Mr. Blake come up and give us a little explanation and answer some questions.
Yeah, so first and foremost, I apologize. I had this at six o'clock, complete miscommunication, mayor, council staff. Complete apologies on that. I was out in the parking lot, just eating away, relaxing, taking calls. So but appreciate you squeezing me in. Wanted to talk to you about the recycling as set forth. We had talked about some of the items. We're very excited about this. Something definitely that we have heard a lot of feedback from your residents on that, you know, this is a program that is a true value add for your residents. It's not something they have to do. This is something that will be an optional program and will be very very well received. You know, anytime you have a value add for your residents where you're able to offer something without it being mandatory, definitely has, we see a higher participation rate in that. So we're very excited to be able to offer that. So along with that, I know Sean and I have been working tirelessly on as far as the renewal that's coming up here in the next couple of months. We're excited to, you know, put some items forth. We're in a very good place with the city of West Haven. We, you know, received very positive feedback, you know, very minimal as far as missed pickups, had a snafu, you know, a couple of times as far as starting before seven o'clock. That has been resolved. I am happy to report. So we've got that. So with that being settled, I know you've discussed this a little bit already, but I'll take a step back and see if there's any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Council, do you have any questions?
I would just say I do have some concerns with the opt-out. I'm worried that residents are going to be upset about this. That they have to opt out or that they're, you know, getting charged when they didn't opt into this.
And there's two schools of thought on this, and that's the great part about this program. You can either do an opt-in where they opt in. You can also do a program where you opt out that has been put forth. What we did with a very nearby city, we allowed them to receive the containers and then have thirty days. Because you can't go thirty days without, you know, going, hey, wait a second, I didn't order this. So we could do, so there's two programs. There's either an opt-in or there's an opt-out where that opt-out they would have the option up to thirty days for us to come pick up that container.
And how do they opt out? Is it a phone call or?
We can leave that. I mean, we can do phone call, email, text message. I mean, sky's the limit on that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
I'm with Nina on that. I'm not a fan of the of the opt-out.
Me three.
Yeah, and that's that's a great part about this. You have options. So I mean, there really is truly options as far as it goes. We can make it, you know, simple on the opt-out or we see it both ways. You know, I mean, we had a program with a nearby city that did an opt-in. It was very successful. I would say it's a very nearby city that did that and was very successful. You know, a couple away did an opt-out. I can tell you what you're describing. We definitely had some of that comeback on the staff where, you know, we had to go out and pick those containers up and things like that. I mean, residents, when you roll out this sort of program, they will know what they're getting. It's a mass communication approach, you know, via social media, flyer, cans. I mean, it's very rare that they don't know what's going on. So we provide ample communication.
Do you have ideas yet on cost per household or does it depend?
Uh, yeah, we have some, I can tell you put forth some pricing that Sean and I worked towards. It's truly a range based upon participation. So and that's you tend to see a little bit more participation with an opt-in sort of or an opt-out program versus an opt-in. But I can tell you the pricing is very, very competitive. It is very competitive. So.
Good.
Okay.
Other questions?
Folks that are in townhomes or apartments, are they going to be serviced at all or how would that work?
We, I mean, that's really up to you is, you know, elected officials is what you would like to see there. I mean, so why are you partnering with us? We're right down the road. So it's one of those that if that's something you wanted to include, absolutely. You know, if it was something that you wanted to let the townhomes deal with it themselves, that can be done as well. So it's really, sky's the limit on how you'd like to handle that. So some cities, HOAs, townhomes, they exclude that, but that's really at the city's discretion.
Okay, what type of items would be recycled, for example?
Yeah, so it's your plastics, paper, cardboard, aluminum. Put me on the spot. I can see the list in my head. Plastic, paper, cardboard, aluminum.
Tin probably.
Tin, you know, your standard household items, but I can provide you a list that would be available. So and the good news is right now, you know, just like anything with recycling. I hear it all the time. You know, it's, oh, it's up, it's down. I can tell you right now is a very good time in the recycling market. We have one of the most state-of-the-art facilities that we just built in Salt Lake City. And, you know, pretty impressive as it relates to that. So we continue to invest in recycling. A lot of AI op disorders. So the old days of having hand orders out there doing it all. It's trucking through at sixty-five miles an hour, all automated.
Awesome, thanks.
Y'all are letting me off the hook easy tonight, you know.
Mr. Eric, please. Lee, could you explain, you know, well, I passed along what some of our conversations were relative to to what's being contemplated with tipping fees included in the rates. And we talked about where that the supply would be delivered. I think it was you had someone here locally. Can you tell us a little bit about how the waste would be, you know, handled and processed beyond just what you did?
Yeah, so absolutely. So your material, you know, we look at different outlets of where the material would go. Ideally, we'd love to find an outlet for the material to come to our facility. Can tell you when we set it up initially, we would look at several options right now. Nearby cities are going to WASATCH Integrated because we get a very aggressive tip fee there. And that's how we priced out the structure based upon that tip fee. But we would constantly look for options to get that material to our facility.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions?
So pricing on the can per resident, I mean, if there's only a twenty percent take rate of the city, when they receive cans waiting for, you know, hopefully more than twenty percent, is that pricing then going to change for that residence than what was projected? I mean, say they thought it was fourteen dollars a month and all of a sudden nobody in the city signed up for it. Are they going to be a hundred dollars a month for that can?
Yeah, so we did, we built something in there that there would need to be at least twenty-five percent. We feel like that's very low. We wouldn't have too much of an issue as far as that twenty-five percent goes. We also know that you already have a portion of your residents that get recycling. Those residents could stay where they're at or we believe we had this happen to, and I can say this in latent, where kind of economics play out, the pricing could be so much less with us that it just kind of makes sense to be able to to go to waste management. So does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
What about fuel surcharges? Say we get diesel over five and a half bucks a gallon or you're they're clean natural gas, whatever you're running in those trucks.
I tell you, West Haven has a very, very good agreement with waste management and there is no fuel surcharge. And there is a cap of three percent period year over year. So it it will not exceed three percent in the agreement.
Perfect. If there's ever a situation where the is it WASATCH Integrated or wherever else is not accepting recycling at that time? They shut down kind of like how Weaver County did. Are you going to notify the residents that the recycling is no longer going there?
We we would. So we would have to, I mean, that's part of our agreement that we would notify you. The other part of it is there's, since we have built in that tipping fee to the rate, if we had to take it somewhere else, that is one element that could caught cause a cost increase. But again, that would be up to you as a council. We couldn't do that without you approving that. So WASATCH Integrated just invested a great deal of money in their facility. So I think it's there for the long haul, but you know, things do happen. So that's the great part about us being located in Salt Lake City. We, you know, our materials recovery facility being located in Salt Lake City is that would then give us the option or opportunity to bring that material down to us. So and we have been approached by transfer stations in the area already to bring that material to us at this point. So we'd constantly be looking for avenues to lower that cost as well.
Okay. And no plastic grocery bags, right? That was the one no.
It's interesting you say that. Right now, we have a city in pilot. This is pretty revolutionary, but at our materials recovery facility that is something that's currently in pilot. We invested heavy in technology. And we actually have an avenue. And again, it's in pilot, so nobody put your bags in there. There was actually a thing on, I believe it was Fox News, a few months back, talking about this. But we are in the process of capabilities to be able to recycle plastic bags and plastic film. But again, not at this immediate moment, but it's very close.
Okay, so thank you.
Yeah, great questions. Anything else?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to our next item on here. Item eight, Action on Planning Commission Meeting Recommendations. This action is on ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five, rezone from A one and A two to a PH zone or patio home approximately at thirty-four eighty-one south, twenty-seven hundred west with the parcels listed on here. This is for Redline Properties. And should we turn the time over to you, Stephen, to get us started on this?
Yeah, I'm happy to give an introduction.
Thank you.
So the applicant has requested an approval or requested approval of an amendment to the zoning map to change their property from A one and A two to patio home zone to PH zone. The planning commission heard this item on September twenty-fourth and recommended a denial, finding that it didn't comply with the general plan. And why then during that planning commission meeting and the to a to a small extent, and then afterwards, the applicant has requested that the city consider in a if PH does not work to consider an R two, which would be compliant with the general plan map. So I can go through some of the additional details with that. So the applicant has also provided a couple of concept plans for what their development would look like. As you can see, there is a big roadway dedication on the western edge. This is part of the thirty-three to thirty-six connector road. Staff has been in contact with the applicant as they have been going down this course and has been working with them to secure that property for the roadway. Initially, the request for the PH zone was to allow the applicant to allow him to develop the same number of units as if he didn't have to do the dedication. However, it is important to note that this would this roadway would be beyond the extent of his one development. So the city would have to compensate him for the purchase of that property. So it's not I guess it's not that the city's taking the property necessarily, but we are purchasing it from him. So he is going to be compensated for that. So some of the so some of the surrounding zones, as you can see, is to the north is an R two, which is compliant with the general plan. Then east and south, we have A one and A two, and then directly to the west is also a A two. And so as we reviewed the plan, one of the biggest things we look at is whether or not is compliant with the general plan. As you can see from our report, that the general plan map has the area listed as two units per acre or recommended as an R two zone. However, we did believe there are some other factors that may be worth considering. Particularly, the moderate income housing plan recommends has a couple initiatives identified in those plans that feel like could be justified or worth considering. Mainly, number one, to facilitate rehabilitation or expansion of infrastructure that will encourage the construction of moderate income housing and then encourage higher density or moderate income residential development near major transit investment corridors, which the subject property is within one and a half miles of the Royce Station. However, the difference between an R two and a PH is quite extensive. As you can see from the site plan, you're looking at the difference between probably six units to fourteen units between the two. R two allows for a maximum of two units an acre, while PH zone allows for a maximum of five units per acre. And so as we reviewed the request, our record, we found that generally speaking, it did not comply with the general plan. And that the request to PH was to was a too significant deviation from the general plan to be that we would recommend denial based off that. And that is partly why the applicant has came back and requested that the council also consider an R two. Uh, the so going to the planning commission, so the planning commission heard the application on September twenty-fourth. They held the proper public hearing. Within the staff report, we provided a summary of some comments that were received during that time. The planning commission motion to recommend the council deny the petition to rezone the property from A one to A two or from A one and A two to PH, finding that requests to rezone the property does not conform with the general plan map. And then the motion passed unanimously. As mentioned, the applicant during the meeting requests of the planning commission are considered different zones. They'd find more compliant. It is probably important to note that this happened right at the tail end of the discussion when the planning commission was about ready to motion. The planning commission briefly considered that and then moved forward with the motion to recommend denial. As mentioned, since the applicant requests has sent an email to staff requesting that they that an R two rezone would be would be something they would seek if the PH wasn't possible. So our code, so this is West Haven City Code one fifty-seven, seven fifteen. Starting subsection A states that in all rezoning petition considerations, the city council, after considering recommendation of the planning commission and after holding required public hearings. recommendation of the planning commission and after holding required public hearings, may take any of the following alternate, sorry, final alternative actions. And the third action under that is the city council may rezone or agree to rezone the subject land to any other zone or zones deemed more appropriate when considering the master plan, citizens' comments, and other factors in which may allow some or all the petitioners' requested uses. Based on the listed findings within our report and under our review, um, staff would recommend approval of the R2 rezone, since it complies with the general plan. So we do have three possible motions listed within our report. The first one is to deny the ordinance altogether. Um, finding that the request is not conform with the general plan. Um, there is an option to approve the patio home zone. Um, I have some language written out within the motion. The ordinance that is in front of you has, matches the staff's recommendation for A1 and A2 to R2. And so the motion to approve a PH, the, there's some language within the motion, our recommended motion that would modify that, um, the ordinance that's attached. And then the third motion we have listed, which is a staff recommended one, was just to approve the R2. Are there any questions?
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Report, appreciate it. Any questions from the council?
Uh, how many people showed up to that public hearing?
It wasn't very many. We had probably about a dozen people, maybe not even that much.
Ooh.
I'll say, I have the, I can pull up the minutes. It was.
It was three people.
Three people showed up?
Sorry, but there was.
There are, there's five people in the minutes that made comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was, I think, two other people who were married that didn't comment.
Yeah.
So there are probably five.
Okay.
I have a question on the um, in the motion or in their, our agenda, it does have the patio home. If, if it is approved through that, how do we, how do we work through that on the patio home versus the R2? I know it's got the motions there, but I'm asking about, it's listed on the agenda as a patio home.
Oh.
Technicalities.
Do we have any issues with that legally, where it's just listed as a patio home on the, on the agenda?
Um, because of the, the way that the code um, is drafted, you know, the, that allows you to amend the um, to any other um, applicable zone, I think you just can make the motion like what, how it's outlined in um, the, the ordinance that was provided that. Didn't you provide an ordinance that said to the R2?
Yeah. That's what the draft ordinance.
Yeah, I saw that. I just wanted to make sure on the agenda, it was listed that way instead of just a, a change that.
So yeah, you do have the authority to be able to change that.
Excellent. Do we need to, um, do we need to hear from Mr. Paulson? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Paulson? Okay. Any questions at all from the council on this?
Uh, no questions, just statement. Patio home, I don't think fits at all. Same with the planning commission, but the R2, I think, is acceptable. Yeah, I think it's good. We're good on our buffering for lot sizes there. So we should be fine.
Okay. Want to leave it open if you'd like to comment, Mr. Paulson, you're welcome to come up. Just state your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name's Nathan Paulson and uh, what else? That's a owner of Redline Properties, 34. I just moved. Uh, the old address, 2609 West, 3075 South. I'm still in the process of the new address, but.
Write it on the back of your hand or something.
Yeah, I apologize. I can't hear the best, so if I ask you to repeat anything, I apologize. Um, that's why I kept turning my head this way. This is my good ear, so. Um, it's just my comments on the patio home. You know, it's, I want to just put on the record, I would have never went that route if it wasn't for the road coming in. The road changed everything. And um, I understand that you don't want to put patio homes right next to A1 and A2. The road is what changed that, because it changes the dynamic of the neighboring properties as well. And that's why I went with the, with that, even though the properties to the south stay A1, it still changes everything because of the road. So that's why I went with the A, or with the patio home. And I, I, you know, went with the single family, um, you know, and at the other meeting, a lot of the neighbors were there and we're pretty good now. They were really upset at the beginning, but uh, they just thought there'd be way too many people. And that's what I just tried to explain is, you know, patio home is like 2.2 P persons per home, where you get a single family, 5,000 square foot home, it's like s, five. So even though I was 13 patio homes, it will actually have less people than six R2 homes. So I just tried to explain that, but honestly, I'm good either way. It really just comes down to maximizing the use of the land the best way, and I, and I'm a big advocate for patio homes. I sold the patio homes on Sophie Lane here in West Haven last year. And people loved them. I mean, they, they absolutely loved them. There's uh, no, no HOA. Um, they, they just gobble them up quickly and I see a need for that demographic of buyer that's usually, I would say the majority were in their 50s to 70s. They didn't want to go to assisted living yet, but they still wanted some independence. And that was the perfect mix for them to do that. Most of them pays to have the snow removed and do all that, but they liked not having a patio home. So I see the demand. That's why I went that way, is to build a really nice street with nice homes, three car garages and go that route, because of the road going in. So where I'm at now, I'm totally fine with an R2 if you will all, you know, approve that. I could put in six really nice homes, uh, make them very, very nice and um, you know, develop the property that way. Because right now it is a major ice ore. I don't know if you know where this property is. And it's, I, I usually will have four dump truck loads per home. I'm on seven in the backyard right now. So we're cleaning it up. We're gonna, I'm gonna then file a, um, for demolition permit. We're gonna get the home demolished, we're gonna clean it all up, and then depending on what you approve for the zoning, I will then proceed that way. So I just wanted to say the reason why I wasn't trying to throw these patio homes in the middle of this agricultural, it was because of the road and uh, that's why I went that way, so.
Perfect. Thank you for your explanation.
Yep.
I think, yeah, we're a big fan of patio homes too. We put a patio home ordinance in and not very many people have that, because they are hugely uh, that, that's a great win.
And the neighbors wanted to know, were they single family guests? And they kind of, all of a sudden, you know, they came with the pitchforks and then they finally started to calm down and, and we're good, you know, I talked to them, but uh, you know, I understand it was scary. It was change and um, yeah, so I see the demand for it, but I'm good either way.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Paulson? Okay, all right. Um, if we don't have any other questions, I guess we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 11 dash 2025, the petition to rezone the property at 3481 South, 2700 West, from A1 and A2 to R2, finding that the petition conforms with the general plan and that R2 is more appropriate when considering the master plan, citizens' comments, and other factors than the original request.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this action? Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and do a roll call on this one. Councilmember Swab?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Saunders?
Aye.
Ca, councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Call?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have R2 over there, but thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to our next item on here. Um, item nine uh, will be for um, action on resolution 49 dash 2025. Amending the West Haven City Personnel Policy Handbook. Um, this is, I think, our lunch break edition. We'll turn that over to Mr. Wonkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You might recall, I believe it was on the Aug- August 20th, uh, city council meeting that uh, uh, policy, this policy was discussed and at that time, uh, it was tabled, the specific policy, uh, in consideration of some of the thoughts and comments expressed uh, during the council discussion, which uh, which namely were to uh, allow a provision um, within some boundaries of allowing employees to work through lunch. And so what this policy does is it describes what those parameters are. A lot of employees here at City Hall um, work through lunch and uh, under certain conditions, that can be counted as work time. Um, that's uh, that's what's uh, being proposed. For public works employees, again, there's um, some provisions in there that would describe when they could count, uh, you know, um, eating lunch and as part of work time. Uh, it also clearly defines that employees are, are uh, to work the required uh, 10 hour days as well. And, and this option of working through lunch is, is at the discretion of their manager. And um, so anyways, I, I hope and, and believe that it addresses the objectives of that conversation that we had and discussion. Um, I did talk to the department heads and uh, they were all supportive of it as drafted. Um, we realized that policies are, are subject to change and evaluation. So that, you know, that's to be understood that uh, you know, if, if something didn't seem like it was working like we hoped, we could, we could certainly adjust it. Um, so unless there's questions about the consideration of the policy, um, you know, I think, I think that summary provides information for you to consider acting upon.
Hey, thanks for the explanation. Council, do you have questions? Well, I'll state something on here. I, I, after talking to a few different cities uh, on how they handle it a little bit, I think what I found out was that um, they kind of considered lunch as lunch and, and they were more uh, specific to their public works and that group of people, not the, not the inner office area. Uh, it's a lot easier to maintain and one of the comments that they made was that it's difficult to manage that when they're not right there. It's easier to understand in the office, uh, where people are close and, and managers can see that. Uh, but I also felt like too, where we're working 10 hour days across the board, people shouldn't really be subject to work full 10 hour days without these breaks. Uh, in the wintertime, it's nice to come in and get warm or to get warm somewhere. Uh, and take their breaks that they, they're allowed to have to have that happen in the summertime, you know, they need to cool down and, and also relax. But I kind of felt like in item two on here, in the red, in the change, that let's see, we're just had on, on, for non-exempt employees on here, uh, it was kind of interesting anyway to kind of read through some of this and uh, and it seemed very confusing. It just seemed like it was a little more easy to just actually have a lunch and then if they need to take some time off, that they work that through their uh, their manager. But those are just some things that I had a chance to look at. Other, uh, most of the cities do require that they have a lunch, that they take their lunch and they try and work through, um, if they have uh, special needs, meaning that they need to go home early or they have uh, something they need to take care of during the day, that they make adjustments for that. And, but they do require most of them to, to take some time. Well, that's just my comments.
Um, on number two, it just seems like what we're saying is, um, you'll still get paid for your lunch break. That's what number two feels like it's saying, like anybody who doesn't work in an office is getting paid for a lunch break. Am I the only one that feels that way?
No.
I'm reading it again.
I think it's just, I think it sometimes just gets confusing to employees of, and like I said, part of the management part is, because in here, if it's talking about they're going to get food and beverage and, you know, they're driving to and from the, the uh, place that they're going to gather food from and, you know, and then they're not required to come back or the situation I heard the most of uh, from employees or from the managers of employees was that when they go out on a job, they try and plan for that job if it's going to be far away. In other words, if they're working, let's just say at the, and it's not, you know, miles and miles away, but we're talking about, you know, five, maybe up to five miles or something like that from the city building. If they're working that area and it's lunchtime, at whatever time they decide, then by the time they drive back to the city, punch out and then sit down and have lunch, it takes too much time for them to do that. But, you know, being in that work situation before, you just kind of plan that you're either going to try and make adjustments to that to make sure that it works and that you're getting your job done and, and being efficient with your time. So I think it can be flexible, but I think that's really should be, and I like the idea of keeping the, the department heads over that. Uh, and still allowing that lunch break, but that's, again, those are just my thoughts and I agree with you, it does seem like we're paying, you know, it's easily, easily paid through as a lunch break. So.
How do we, if, if we did change that, do you think it'd be okay to strike that entirely, that item two or?
Um, well, you could, uh, you could certainly do that. I, I.
I think the main concern, if I remember right, was the office employees that were trying to, you know, that were able to continue to work while eating at their desk. So I, I can see both sides of this one, and I think that it, it could get a little confusing and a little bit difficult to, to manage that where, you know, they could be in a fast food line for quite a bit of time. Possibly, and, and, you know, could end up taking quite a bit of time to, to do that, whereas employees at their desk, if they've already got their food there, they can continue to kind of work through that. So I, I see that as, as a real possibility.
I've never been able to eat lunch while I'm shoveling. I just can't do it. I'm not very talented in that way. But it's difficult. There's, their tasks are a little different than, I think, office tasks is all. And I, I, I think the main idea behind this is this isn't any type of, you know, restrictive punishment. This is just standard procedures with working a 10 hour day and taking some time off to recuperate a little bit, hydrate, do the things they need to, but not, not at the expense of uh, you know, cutting the day short because they're, they're eating lunch like everybody else. I just think it should be something that lunch is lunch. Lunch break should be a time where they can stop and, and just kind of recharge a little bit.
I will say, I mean, I work for a rather large company, 100,000 employees across uh, the world. And our policy is kind of, if you work at a desk, you can have your lunch at your desk while you're working. But if you work on a production floor, if you work, you know, anywhere outside of a desk, or if you leave, then you have to clock out. So to me, that's standard. And it, I mean, maybe it doesn't feel fair, but that's just um, the nature of the work that we all do.
Um, I, I do agree that the line that talks about um, going through a drive-through or whatever to purchase your food. I mean, we're telling the office staff, if they go eat in the lunchroom, then they need to clock out, right? So I think it's the same thing if you're leaving whatever job you were working on, to go then and buy, go buy lunch, even if it's within the city. That should be standard for those that do outside work and those that are in the office. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think the other thing that we need to consider too is what sort of liability there is if they're um, out getting lunch and getting an accident and they're on the clock. That would be a little bit of a concern to me too. And the only reason I bring that up is because, I mean, my nephew was, was involved. I mean, my nephew was, was involved in an accident with very similar situations. An employee was leaving the Wendy's drive-through on the clock and, and uh, he made a ton of money off of that. So that would be a concern as well.
I guess I have a question about on the clock and off the clock. Um, we don't actually clock out, so you know, when we say we're on the clock or off the clock, how, how do we do that when we're, you know, out and about?
You probably just have to write it in, right? I don't know. Oh, how, I don't know the system.
Not know it either.
But.
Oh, can you help us with that, John?
Maybe Emily, more specifically, you could talk to her.
It's a digital clock in, clock out system. So they could potentially just clock out for their lunch break and clock back in.
Okay. So they can do it mobily then?
But do we, do we do that now, Emily? Do we have them clock out for their lunches?
No, they are not clocking out right now.
One, one point of clarification, at least, Emily, if you could clarify, because my understanding was is you have to be within a certain range in order to be able to clock out of the system. And so for public works, they essentially need to be either near the city hall potentially, or near their public works um, building in order to clock in and clock out. So they, if they were out on a job, you know, Twenty First Street, doing something, they, they couldn't very easily clock out.
No, we would have to change the parameters for that.
So I'm just wondering if this will change what the, what the office workers have to do too, if we're going to ask them to clock in and clock out if we're, we're asking the outside employees to do that. I mean, just, just to be consistent.
I, I kind of understand. Wait, I understand what you're saying, Kim, but I think that they're two different jobs and two different situations, so.
So we're going to ask the people who work outside of the office to clock in and clock out, even though they're going to have to come closer to West Haven to clock out. I mean, I, I'm totally, I
I think there's probably should be a workaround that's where they don't have to come back.
I think Emily said that we can change the parameters on that.
Is that true?
Is that what you just said?
Yeah. So it geofences them into a certain area and we can decide how large that area is. So we could do multiple areas to try and accommodate that.
Okay. And I totally get this and I'm fine with that. I just, as we're setting up two different systems, I, I just want to make sure that we're fair to both.
Any other comments?
I think it should be left up to these department heads on how that they have about it. I think it's going to be tough if we create a situation that's, that, you know, for instance, in the public works department, there's always two of them together, right? What if one of them decides they want to clock out and one doesn't? Now they're on the same job. That, that's a problem. So I think that, that there may need to be a little bit of a trial period here. If we implement something and we say, hey, let's, let's set up a date three months from now and how's it going, right? And check in, and because this can be altered if it's not working out. But I think that's going to be tough for some of these individuals that have to work with someone else who may or may not want to take lunch.
Yeah, I, that's exactly what the census was that I got from the people I talked to was that it's too hard to manage that when you've got, because you know, you've got group, work groups in different areas throughout the city. So it makes it difficult for uh, the manager or the head, department head to, to be there to see if people are clocking in or out. But the fact is, is they still have to go back and check and make sure that things are happening, but they, they can make exceptions if that one person in your scenario, um, council member call, if that person makes arrangements with the department head, and that's why I think that's so important, right? The department head should have the call to make that uh, decision, direction, because it's communication uh, through the workers to their department head that uh, uh, council member Sonder and I are going out to dig a ditch and do some things out there. He's got to leave early. Then he's going to check out and he's going to take a lunch or do something a little different. If he wants to go do that, then he clears it with his department head. But I think, I think that when I read two, I guess, I get confused a little bit on what's, how this is supposed to happen. Um, clocking in and out and going through drive-throughs and all that. I think just simplifying it and leaving it more in the department head's uh, lap would be a lot more help and understandable. So if there's changes that the council wants to make to it, we need to give a recommendation and then see how that works. And then we can do a trial if you, if that works as well too.
Yeah, my recommendation would be on number two to change that, uh, so that those folks are clocking out.
Any other ingredients to that or difference?
No, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think it's difficult if you're going to a drive-through, I think you need to clock out.
Is there a way to set up the time start of the shift and the end of the shift and just subtract thirty minutes from the overall? I mean, changing the geofence gets hairy, right? So you have it close to city hall and, and close to the public works. The intent of that is to make sure that they're actually close when they're clocking in or clocking out, right? If we open the geofence to the entire city, I mean, they could be right on the edge of Roy or Hooper and be clocking into work and they're still five, ten minutes out, right? So I think that gets messy, but if there's a way just to say you start at seven and you get done at five thirty and thirty minutes automatically comes out, then you'd be good to go.
Isn't there a way for the, the supervisor or department head to override it?
Yeah. So they could go in and they could, they could put a clock out period.
Yeah. And if it was just thirty minutes subtracted all the time and oh, hey, I forgot to tell you, Mr. Director, I wasn't going to take lunch because of this and that. And then he makes that one little correction.
Yeah, definitely.
I, I agree with you on the geofence.
Yeah.
Can I ask, do they have to take their leave in hour increments or can they do it in half hour increments?
They actually can do it in fifteen minute increments.
Okay. That, that's good.
Okay. So does two need to be struck and rewrote? Or can it be just struck?
I think so. I, it's up to the council, but that's what I would recommend probably. If that's what the direction you want to go.
Don't we have to somehow?
I think it's got to say something. Who's primary workplace is outside of an office environment? We've got to have something. I don't, I don't think we could just strike it.
So what suggestion do you have? What would you put in there?
Um, do you want to try to mirror number one? But with a, but with it being offsite?
So non-exempt employees whose primary workplace is outside of an office who choose, okay, Amy, help me out here. I started thinking I was gonna, it was going to be easy, but it's a little bit harder than I thought.
It is a little bit harder and, and that, because I was looking at it too, thinking how would, you know, we look at changing it. Um, maybe we, maybe you do something like, um, non-exempt employees whose primary workplace is outside of, of an office environment and who choose not to take a lunch break may work through their lunch break by having food and beverages at their work location and shall be available to perform the essential duties of their job.
I guess
that was
if you're going to bring your lunch to work, I can see, you know, you've got your lunch box with you. I, I could see where, you know, that would work.
I mean, that's similar, that's very similar to the office staff having lunch at their desk.
Yeah.
Right. Same thing.
And then they'd be treated the same. It's not that they're going out to the drive-through or, you know.
So do we need a line though, that says, um, if they leave the job site, then they must clock out?
Yes.
Yeah, you could put that.
Yeah, wherever they're working and they choose to eat real quick, what they have with them, that's fine. On their fifteen minute breaks, I mean, if they get in the truck, I mean, my guys always get in the truck, they'd hit the gas station and grab their food for the day and just go. Right? And they knew that they would take a lunch. Um, but to say that they're not taking a lunch break, but driving somewhere away from they were working to go grab food, doesn't make sense. So I would strike the driving anywhere, that you had your food with you, either you brought from home or on your fifteen minute break in the morning, you grabbed something as you were passing by. But again, that's a lot of words to just put into a policy and I, I like trying to minimize this and leave it to the department head.
I feel good about like the additions that Amy made and then just striking two. So I think that kind of solves it.
Well, it doesn't, we, I think we still have to add language if they leave the job site.
Yeah, yeah. You might add that to the tail end of one.
Need to clock out or have their supervisor adjust their hours. What's that?
If they leave the job site, it is a lunch break.
Yeah. So I could come up with some language, um, regarding that, you know, if you're leaving the job site, they have to clock out.
And that'll probably go with the in-office as well. If you're leaving site to go get food.
Yeah.
They need to clock out.
Yeah, any, any employee that leaves a job site, whether it's an office or
or if they go to the break room to eat or something like that, if they're taking
I think that's already in there, isn't it? The
Yeah, they have to be available and perform the essential duties of their job.
At their workstations. So they have to be at their workstation in an office.
So I can, I can look at making some, you know, those changes to one and two.
Okay.
Do we need to table it then?
I would ask that.
Okay.
Just because it's
You don't want to try and do it right now.
I could, and I am that awesome, but if you want it to look good, then please can we table it?
Yes, I think it'd be good. So I'm ready for a motion.
We're not going to question your awesomeness, Amy, but we should probably table it.
Yes, please.
Before we do that, I want to ask, um, Sean, what are your thoughts on this discussion? I mean, you've already had this discussion with the department heads and gotten their feedback. Someone else talking about this, what are your thoughts?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Call. Um, you know, I think, uh, I think the conversation's been full of good points. I mean, these are things that we've discussed, um, over multiple meetings and with department heads. So you know, really in the end, I think, uh, I think the department heads and everyone just wants to, um, you know, to move forward with whatever policy seems reasonable and, and equitable. Um, so I, I do think there is, uh, you know, the thought is, is, and they appreciated, I think, the, the thought of allowing them to work through lunch in a good faith effort. And, and that's what I've stressed to department heads. And that's what we've talked about. You know, that any scenario where they're able to count as work time and they're eating or something like that, everyone's putting forth a good faith effort to perform work, to be productive and to get back to their essential duties as quickly as possible. So that's what number two was really more or less trying to accomplish. I, I think it got a little convoluted frankly, because there's so many different variables for those out in the field. Um, and and the issue that you brought up, um, there's some real practical implications because they are working in crews and and they're out and about anyway. So again, we were doing our best to try to, you know, create some flexibility, uh, for managers to manage and for employees to put forth a good faith effort. And and I truly do believe we have great employees. Um, I think they remain productive. Um, I think we have good managers that establish and maintain a good culture as well. So so that said, I mean, it, it, again, it's really what what you guys feel most comfortable about, because we understand you have constituents and and these are taxpayer dollars too, and, and we, we want to be productive and, and put in a good honest day's work and effort.
And thank you for that.
Number two, as it was written, could that mean that the employee four days a week, every week for the entire year can choose to skip lunch? Or was that supposed to be an occasional, like one-off item? Like I had to be somewhere in the afternoon and work for lunch today, Director, is that okay?
Well, it was really, uh, you know, the, the default is, is everyone takes a half hour lunch. Um, realizing that there's an exception and the exception can become a default i- in a way if the manager approves it. And, and that's what this, uh, this exception was, is it was a manager approved allowance. So you know, if the manager ever felt like there was abuse going on or it wasn't working out, I mean, I say abuse, but I mean, if they felt like it wasn't conducive to, to getting the work done or being productive, um, then we would, they would disallow it. Uh, realizing, you know, frankly, that public works employees who are out in the field, you know, are, need time to coordinate and plan the next uh, period of operations, um, and coordinate. And, and so that's really the only essential duty that they could perform while taking lunch. Um, and, and still counting as work. And, and we realize when we're having conversations, they're very dynamic and they've, you know, it, it flows in and out of work. But, but the idea was is that they were kind of coordinating and collaborating and and getting ready to do the next, um, the next, next task. Um, and that they would eat, you know, in earnest quickly and, and, and again, be able to return to their essential duties as quickly as possible. So, um, anyways, that's, those were some of the thoughts in trying to draft, uh, trying to draft this policy.
Did that, that answer your question, Councilmember Call? She gone?
Sorry, I missed that. I have a barking dog here. I'm sorry.
I was just asking Councilmember Call if it answered your question.
Okay.
You're on mute?
No, my, my internet's going out a little bit. No, no, that's what clarification I wanted. I just want to make sure that we kind of are all on the same page, you know, they're down in the trenches and understand. Want to make sure we're moving forward in the right direction.
I, you know, I would say too, I mean, I, I again, re- relative to work and work periods and, and breaks, um, I would say I, I don't believe, and this isn't across the board, this is an absolute, but, but I do think most employees work through their breaks, not to say that, um, this, this is sort of out in the field. I mean, not to say that they don't have a water break or sit in the shade for a moment to catch their breath, but I don't think it's you know, it's not like a unionized approach to, to work where they stop at a certain time. I mean, I, I really do feel like the employees put forth a good faith effort when they're out in the field to, to get work done. Um, you know, realizing that they, they need a little time to recuperate. So and to that point, you, you know, we were trying to de-emphasize some of that issue of of, of getting into this mentality of, of taking breaks and clocking in and, or not clocking in and out, but just this idea that, well, you know, I'm going to take this fifteen minute break because in practice, I don't, I, I don't think that's a conscious issue or, um, approach to the work. I, I really do think they they, they get in and, and work, you know, if they need to get a drink or use the restroom, they do that. Um, and, and they move on. And that's really what, uh, John and Brock have been focused on is as far as trying to get the, um, minimize the, the delays in the start time of, of work. Um, you know, because there's a little bit of time when they arrive where they're coordinating, lining people out, uh, getting the tasks ready. But, but I think there's been a concerted effort to, to minimize and again, um, put people out in the field to be productive and, and to get the work done.
I, I feel like the proposed changes still allow, allow for that, um. But they're a little more, it, it'd be a little more clarified in my mind by getting rid of two. I just think that
Changing two or getting rid of it?
Getting rid of it.
I think it needs to be changed and not gotten rid of.
I, I don't know how you change that section and, and not make it well, and make it clear.
Let's ask, um, because
That's
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting is that I, you know, mirror number one, but with the, um, the saying it's outside of, of an office environment and then craft that language and then also add
Yeah, my, my thought was that would just be in in one and
It's a little bit It's a little bit trickier though with one because it's so specific with, with they, one has the, um, the primary workplace is an office versus the, the job site.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And I, I think that we have to, if we're addressing office, I think we have to address the outside. So I think that we need something in a two.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify my, my recollection of the policy? And I did, uh, Amy, you know, and I tagged him on it. I did make quite a few changes based on, um, some of the thoughts, uh, that I had and, and my understanding of the last discussion. So just to be clear, I think the default is that, um, everyone takes a half hour lunch. Um, these are exceptions, one and two, and we put two in there to create some parity uh, between the two types of employees. Um, so I guess the option is, is one to, to continue to have two and, and allow this exception for out of, uh, office employees and, and just tighten the parameters. Or, you know, I've also heard conversations about just understanding that those positions maybe are inherently different and, you know, they, they don't have this exception available to them. So I, I think those are kind of your two options. I mean, there is that same issue that it, this is all applicable to uh, non-exempt employees too. So there is, I guess, some thought that there are different types of employees and, and different job demands, um, associated with, with the positions they hold and their essential duties. So those are just some things to, to consider.
Well, and, and three point ten C, it does specifically state that all full-time, non-exempt employees shall take an unpaid lunch break of up to thirty minutes. So that is already, it is outlined in there that that's the, the default. And that D is the, if this happens, this is what's, and that one and two, you know, here, number one is the office, number two is the, um, outside the office.
Yeah, I'm with you now.
Hey, oh, I, I think we give some time to maybe review it real quick, make some changes, you know, make. I think the goal is just try and keep it simple and not too complicated so that it, because it leaves too much room for interpretation, I think, in a convoluted discussion, I think about it. So I think, I think you're, we're trying to maybe make it fit all occasions that would be best, but it might work out a little better to simplify it. So I guess I'm ready for a motion if you want to try and table that.
Would move to approve, uh, item ten, action on resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-five authorizing the city manager to submit grant applications for ramp funding. Oh, sorry, I read it wrong.
We, we just need to table though. You need to make him, yeah, we need a table.
Oh, sorry. Oh my gosh.
She's, she's done with.
Already checked it off, that's why. All right, let's try this again. I would move to table action on resolution forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five amending the West Haven City Personnel Policy Handbook.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on, on this resolution? Okay, uh, we'll do a, we're not gonna do a roll call on this one. We'll just do, just, that's okay. Just go ahead and vote on this. All in favor, say aye. We get everybody. Motion approves. I think there's no nays on that. Everybody went forward, so we're good. All right, uh, that's tabled. Let's move on to the next one on here. I'll read that one if that's okay.
Probably bad.
All right. Item ten, action on resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-five authorizing the city manager submit grant applications for ramp funding and we'll turn that over to our city manager again.
This is, uh, this is an item we've talked and discussed over multiple meetings. And I think we've done a good job identifying some, some good projects that, uh, the city could apply for and, and be competitive through the ramp grant funds. Um, since we've talked about it before, unless there's any questions, I'll, um, I'll, uh, I'll stop at, at this point.
Everybody get a chance to read through and any questions on the grants?
I, I still just wonder about the playground at Polter Pond, if there's not something else that would be a priority bef- before that. But if everybody else feels that, that's.
Did you have a replacement? What'd you think of something else that might be?
Uh, landscaping, I don't know.
I'll tell you, I, I've thought about that a lot too, and I thought, do we need a playground at the pond?
I, I don't know that we do. I think we have lots of those.
I'm, I'm thinking, it's more of a trail thing, right? It's not the fishing or the recreation. It's a, it's a walking trail and maybe walking over to play on the playground, but I mean, is that a place where we, seems like more of just grass and a pavilion might be nice there, place to eat lunch. But I don't know. That's, that was the only one I had a question about.
Yeah, the pavilion's great. I think that's needed over there. I just don't even know. I, I'm kind of with you. I don't know if that's needed over there, but if we are gonna apply for something else, I, you know, I don't know whether, what, what else would be inside of the, um, parameters of the grant, but I just think it's a little premature, um.
I mean, we're, we're getting it done timely, which is really nice as you're right. But is there, I mean, we don't have to probably come up with something right now, but, uh, I, just your thoughts. I mean, maybe a playground is great there. I just, I'm just trying to understand it too.
To your point though, mayor, I, I just thinking here, I mean, if I was a mother and had a five and seven-year-old and I said, hey, go play at the playground, we're sending them right next to a body of water, right? That may be unsupervised and I think, you can weigh in on this. I see him over there shaking his head. He's like, you're right. I, I, I think a playground is probably not a good situation next to the pond. But maybe we move that over by the pavilions. That way, mom's not sending her kids out to play thinking they're on the playground and they're swimming.
You mean, uh, still put one by the pavilions at the pond?
No, uh, over by, at the barn.
Yeah, and the reason being, I, that's, that's one of the major things too. Unless you almost put a fence up, you worry about those kind of things. But you'd have to put a fence around the pond, which doesn't make any sense. It's just a, it's just, I agree.
I feel like it's just, that one is just, oh, always felt like it was out of place and.
Sounded like a good idea at the time.
Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna kind of weigh in with a different thought, which is, um, you know, it's nice to have facilities that have multi, that appeal to different participants, uh, for different reasons. Realizing too that families are, have children of different ages and different interests. And so I do think adding, um, adding the ability for young kids, uh, to go and play on the playground would be helpful and make it a more attractive or a more, um, well, I guess attractive option for families to spend time at. You know, otherwise those who aren't participating, participating in fishing, there's not much other activities, uh, that are available for them. So it really limits, it really becomes a one-user type or one-activity type, um, park. Uh, so, you know, realizing parents have an obligation to watch their kids, um, you know, at any city facility. And so I, I would sort of, uh, you know, that's where my thoughts are. I guess I would encourage uh, some of our facilities to have multi-dimensions for use and appeal for for all different types of, um, of, of age groups and interests.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me actually, um, especially when you consider, um, this is really a family city and, and maybe parents do want to go fishing, but they've got little ones that don't want to go fishing.
But we have rocks. I'd love to, I'd love to know how many of those rocks on the side have been wound up in the pond because that's what kids like to do is rocks. But no, I, I understand that. I think it's just something to, it, if, if we can get away with putting the type of playground that we did at Country Park with the spider web thing in the middle and no one's died on that yet, uh, I think we're okay. That is, that is a crazy thing. And I sit and watch my five-year-old climb at the top. And I think, wow, you're a brave little dude, but, uh, I, it's just one of those things too. And I thought, man, the mosquitoes over there, I thought, is it really a, a place, you know, in the summertime to, to do that kind of stuff? Because it does induce, you know, some of those things too. I'm fine either way. I just, I was thinking the same. Was it the best use of our funds? Uh, but it would be, it'd be nice, I guess, to have over there.
What does everybody else feel on, online?
I, I'm actually fine with that. I mean, it might be that people are going there to have their kids play. We've got all of, um, green farms there and another playground for them. So they might not even be going fishing, but they, you know, would have another place to play. I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm also fine to have it there.
There you have it. Okay. All right, I think we say it the way it is. How about that? Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I think we, we should be good to go on that one. All right. Now I've lost my paper. What do I do with it? Here we are. So I guess, uh, we're ready for a motion to move forward with it.
I'm not doing it.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-five authorizing our city manager to submit grant applications for ramp funding.
Second.
Okay, you, you got a remote, uh, response and a second. Fantastic. A motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion from the council? Okay, we'll do a, let's do a roll call on this one. Uh, council member call?
Aye.
Council member Dixon?
Aye.
Council member Saunders?
Aye.
Council member Morse?
Aye.
And council member Swap?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks for the discussion on it because it, I think it helps everybody to work through those things. So we all feel good about it, right? And we have a good, good feeling about it overall. Anyway, all right, we'll move on to, is there anything else we need to discuss out of item eleven from our previous meeting? Okay, we'll move on to item twelve adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further, further discussion on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any, any opposed? I guess we're good to go. Thank you for everyone and your work on this.